Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Patu.
I would just like to make note that when we develop a Southeast dual-language immersion pathway, I would like to actually not only be involved but also communities in the Southeast.
Yes. And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, could you take a roll call vote, please, for amendment number one?
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This amendment has passed with a vote of six to one.
Amendment number two: Keep reference area B and the Ballard High School attendance Formal motion, please.
I move that reference area B, as shown in attachment G of the High School Growth Boundaries Plan Board Action Report, be retained in the Ballard High School attendance area.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, or concerns with a time check of 8:13? Director Patu?
So can somebody tell me what is the benefit of actually keeping this in Ballard High School since I'm not that familiar with Ballard High School?
Director Burke, would you like to take a shot at that, sir?
I will do my best. I think some of our families have probably been more eloquent than I. As you may recall from our work session, the Lincoln High School attendance area was primarily created from existing Ballard High and existing Roosevelt High regions. So those are the families that are primarily, not exclusively, but primarily impacted by this. And so that's where we have the most sort of uncertainty or trying to understand exactly how much of that line goes to Ballard and how much of that line goes to Lincoln. So this is a region that has moved back and forth between several different maps as we went through the work of the Boundary Task Force and the most recent maps. And a lot of the question is, do they fit best in Ballard or do they fit best in Lincoln? Geographically, they are closest to Ballard, so walkability, as you heard in the comments, is advantageous. They do numerically maybe fit slightly better in Lincoln, but there's uncertainty in our projections. And if we assign this area to Lincoln, which I believe is 84 students, something in the -- somewhere in that range, the risk of over-enrolling Lincoln, which can't take portables, is much greater than the risk of over-enrolling Ballard. So even with these students, Ballard's enrollment in 2019 and beyond, all the way through to 2021, will be less than its enrollment this year, based on our projections. So the flexibility and the capability of Ballard High School to accommodate these extra students, along with the uncertainty of, wow, if they go to Lincoln and we overload Lincoln, it's going to be a huge problem and we're going to have to move boundaries again, or have this conversation, is what has sort of created this discussion. I had a conversation with Kevin Weincooke, principal of Ballard, to understand what is the impact, pro or con, their ability at the school to accommodate these kids. And he said his number-one goal was to make sure that Lincoln was successful. And he believed that these students would not be a problem either way in that, you know, he didn't feel that these students going to Ballard would impact Lincoln's ability to be successful. And he believed that he could, at his school with his resources, manage this number of students. So the overwhelming community feedback for this region was also that they wanted to go to Ballard, they felt a neighborhood identity to Ballard, and that coupled with the walkability was the reason for moving this forward.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Geary, please.
When this community came to me and made this request, I told them specifically if I could be reassured by the principal that the increased attendance at Ballard would not negatively impact the more vulnerable populations because I explained that I am sure that their kids with their support would be fine, but that it is the kids that are harder to serve once you get over capacity that will end up falling through the cracks. And he assured me that he did not believe that this particular switch would have a negative impact on Ballard High School's ability to serve more vulnerable populations. And so with that, I said I would support it as well.
Other questions, comments, or concerns? Ms. Scheck, roll call vote, please, on amendment number two.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Amendment number three? Amendment number three has been withdrawn. Amendment number four: Allow current sixth and seventh grade highly capable students from West Seattle attending Washington Middle School to enroll in Garfield as rising ninth graders in 2019, '20, and 2021. Being the sponsor of said resolution, I'd like to move it, if I might. And it's exactly the same as what I just read, so if we could have a formal second, please, madam.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'm certainly happy to speak to this. I believe that it may be duplicative, but I'm happy to take questions and/or assist. Director Geary, please.
My question around this particular amendment, and I apologize that I may have skipped this one in terms of reading the background material, so what I need to know from you or from somebody is, is my understanding, the need to alleviate some of the pressure on Garfield has to do with the fact that the neighborhood students, the overcapacity within the school is having a negative impact on the ability to serve the students in the neighborhood. So does this, how does that intersect with that concern?
We are talking about 20 students. Having those 20 students continue their pathway to Garfield will not horrifically overwhelm Garfield, especially with Lincoln opening up. And this is one of those resolutions that came with community input, very rowdy, thoughtful community input. And I'm really excited about building out the West Seattle highly-capable pathway at Madison and West Seattle because we still have enough of a cohort to make that happen and we have very thoughtful, strategic ideas from both Principal Geary and Principal Vance. And anyone that has ever met Principal Breidenbach knows she's just a rock star on two legs. So I suffered some bruises and slings and arrows, but it was rich, thoughtful, profound conversation. Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
I'd also like to point out that this is another place in which we are, if adopted, I think, the intention around honoring commitments that are made to communities. This community, in terms of the planning process for building out the West Seattle pathways, had lots of conversations about how that would transition, when Madison would open as an optional, optional, when they would open, and then what would happen if those students selected to continue to go to Washington, and would they still go to Garfield, and that those were long conversations and there was a planning process and recommendations came out of that. And for these students, as we heard in testimony earlier, we've got some kids with special needs that are, you know, caught up in that, and that I think that being sensitive to those needs and the, you know, the commitments that were made previously is important.
Director Geary?
In light of everybody's resounding commitment to really want to build out the pathways for the future, I'd like to hear from Chief Wyeth Jesse about whether or not this negatively impacts our ability to build out that pathway in West Seattle so that we're ready and to fulfill our commitment to really building out the highly-capable pathways locally.
Good evening, Wyeth Jesse, Chief of Student Support Services. No, my answer is no, it doesn't negatively impact that amount of students, doesn't negatively impact the course offerings. Currently, I already have 11 AP courses at West Seattle High School, and so we already have plans to help making sure that we have enough courses for those students who are already actually going there and those who are planning to go there.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke?
I want to share thanks to the community. This is a thing that was not on my radar, and I had some guests at my community meeting that schooled me up quickly and helped us put together some background, some language. And that process reaffirmed for me what we have to do for our student assignment plan moving forward, that we have a student assignment plan and we do these annual transition plans, but we need a place, central place, where we can put this body of institutional knowledge because it was not even on my radar, and if the community had not brought it, then with all good intent, this group of students would have been redirected and we would have broken a promise, commitment that we had made, which is not what we want to do. And so I think there's a large number of these types of commitments that, because we don't capture them well enough in our institutional documentation and our institutional knowledge, there's just a lot of, you know, board directors evolve, staff evolves, the system evolves. So it's my ask to the Operations Committee and staff that when we're looking at our student assignment plan, that we look back into the past at pathway concerns, commitments, promises made, and we put them in there as placeholders for future years so that we don't lose track of this.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please, for amendment number four.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
And thank you to my community. Thank you ever so much. Amendment five: Provide ninth and 10th grade highly-capable students in the new Lincoln pathway area the option to attend Lincoln and allow all ninth-grade highly-capable eligible students district-wide to attend their pathway school. Mr. Vice President, formal motion, please.
I move that attachment N be amended to add language that allows current sixth and seventh grade highly-capable students from West Seattle attending Washington Middle School to enroll in Garfield as ri-
Excuse me, you're on the wrong amendment, sir. We're on amendment five.
Yeah, my script is broken. Hang on, hold that thought. Hold that thought. You want that?
Director Mack? Take her away.
Sponsor.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was like, this is, talking is familiar.
I move that attachment N be amended to add language that allows, oh, I did the same thing. I pulled the wrong one. I move that attachments K and N, Nate, is that right? Thank you, be amended to, as attached to this Board Action Report, to add language that provides ninth and 10th grade highly-capable students in the new Lincoln pathway area the option to attend Lincoln and allow all ninth-grade highly-capable eligible students district-wide to attend their pathway school in 19, in 2019, '20.
Formal second, please.
Second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns on amendment number five, please? Director Burke?
I will do my best on this. So we have a, if I, I guess if I had a dollar for every time people asked, what will happen to eighth graders in, what will happen to my rising eighth graders? I think we could figure out how to fund some of these programs that we're talking about because there's a, we have a two-year head start here that we're doing as part of this work, and once we make that commitment, there's a group of students that are looking at a decision next year that impacts their following year. So unlike typically when we're like, okay, what's going to happen in next open enrollment, we're looking at a combination of essentially two open enrollments. And so the challenge that we have is if you have a, we've created a pathway at Lincoln High School for highly-capable students, but if you have a ninth grader in Ballard High School that is rising to 10th grade in 2019, can you enroll them in the highly-capable program in Lincoln at which we've created a pathway? And so we did not have that certainty in, or clarity, in the documents that were created previously, and when we discussed that with staff, and I hope that staff will correct me if I'm misspeaking here because this is sort of a layer on a layer on a layer, that this amendment is essentially to clean up that language, to provide clarity that if you have a ninth grader or a 10th grader, they have a pathway assignment to Lincoln. Did I get that right?
There are actually two parts to this, so I just want to clarify and explaining. So the one part that you just mentioned was about students who would be in 10th grade in 2019, '20, and I apologize, Ashley Davies, Director of Enrollment Planning. So in, again, 10th graders in 2019, '20 who are HC-eligible, and so this amendment essentially signifies that those who are eligible but may not have been enrolled in Garfield would have the ability to enter into their pathway, which would be Lincoln, as a student enrolled in HC. And then also if a student was in Garfield in HC, they could also decide to enroll in Lincoln. That's the first part of it. The second part about ninth-grade highly-capable eligible students district-wide, currently students have to be in the highly-capable cohort in eighth grade in order to continue into the pathway at the ninth-grade level in high school. They get automatically enrolled and then would opt back into their neighborhood school if they did not want to continue in the pathway to Garfield, and they have the option to apply to Ingram. This other part to the amendment signifies that any student who is eligible but may not be enrolled in the highly-capable cohort in eighth grade could then opt into one of the pathways, which per the motion would be West Seattle High School, Lincoln, Garfield, and then Ingram as an option. I recognize that may be really clear in my head, but still not clear for others, so if you want me to go through that again or ask a clarifying question.
Director Mack?
I think that was very clear, thank you, Ashley, because it's helpful to clarify that. So because we haven't discussed in depth the main motion and the pathways that are staff recommendation as part of the main motion, which is the map, the F 4.3, right? That's the number we're on? Yes. And the pathways, which are recommended in that motion, and staff has put those forward, they also put forward in that, is it K or N, the transition plan for Lincoln that clarifies whose grandfather is, who's not, what's happening, and part of that recommendation in honoring a commitment that was made earlier, which may or may not be as ideal from a capacity standpoint, but it was a commitment that was made that in 2019, '20, the 10th graders at Garfield that are HC, they can remain at Garfield, that they would be grandfathered as opposed to geo-split to Lincoln. And that's staff's recommendation, is to honor that commitment to those HC students. There are some students that may want to come back to Lincoln, to come closer to home in that grade, and so creating the option for them to be able to do that, because it is the new pathway school, is what this amendment helps allow as well, right? Am I being clear to you?
That's my understanding of the amendment.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. Well, we have Ms. Davis in the box. Thank you. We hear every day from folks that your process is too messy and your process is not clear, and what are you doing to my family? I suspect this woman lives here and has a sleeping bag in her office, and she's been asked so much by so many, and not once has she pushed back or been anything less than an extraordinary professional, and she's got a great team. She doesn't have enough of a team because we're broke, but I cannot thank you enough for bringing us from November till tonight, and I appreciate just how much work that's been, and I call you a human-computer rock star.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns about amendment number five? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please, for amendment number five.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Geary?
Yes.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Now we're back to the motion as amended. Director DeWolff, please, sir.
Thank you, President Harris. I was curious, really felt compelled to lift up just one more amendment. Was hoping, particularly listening to the Loyal Heights Elementary folks, if, and I'm trying to work on the language here, so I apologize that this is not going to be elegant, eloquent.
Mr. General Counsel, you want to come to the box, please, to assist? Thank you.
So I'd like to move to amend scenario F V 4.3, and it's a squiggle line, so I know that's not how you describe it for the record, but the Loyal Heights Elementary boundaries, north of 85th, west of 28th Avenue Northwest, and then-
Please.
I'm asking for us to include that in Ballard High School's boundaries, but I don't know how to describe that.
Keeping this moving, as they work on the language and the Scrivners' aspect of this, do we have a second for this motion so that we can discuss?
I second the motion.
Director Burke, you have comments while we keep moving?
This one's above 85th. So we have to say east of or west of?
He wants just this.
West of 28th. Or 28th and west. Can I ask a question? Above 85th.
Director Patu, please.
Can you tell me what's the benefit of actually doing that?
I think it's a low amount of students to keep within the high school boundaries that they've been assigned since kindergarten, differently than some of the other kind of chunks.
So how many, exactly how many students are we talking about?
From different numbers here, I have as low as five to six per year, but from some numbers from, and Ashley can answer the exact number, but it might be a little bit different.
Please, Ms. Davis.
I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, that's okay. So we are going to define this area as the area of the Loyal Heights attendance area that is above 85th, north of 85th, and then what do we say, west of? And west of 28th Avenue Northwest. And so in that particular area, there are a total of, and I'm going to break this down several ways to kind of get us to that five students. So there are 66 students currently across grades K through 12. Of those 66, you have 44 who are at Loyal Heights because you have others who are opting in HC and other schools. We have other option schools as well that families are opting into. So you can tell that spans a number of grades. If we break that down just to high school grades, there are actually currently no students in grades nine through 12 who live in that area. If we look at the next set of four grades, that would give us current grades five through eight, there are 14. Of those 14, there are five that would be within Loyal Heights if they were assigned there. So that's how we get to that five number. But I just want to be really clear that there are more students who live there, they're just exercising other options through choice.
Thank you for that quick analysis.
Yes, and then one other thing I do want to mention, so there was a conversation about keeping the Loyal Heights community together, so just want to be really clear that this year there was a boundary change that goes into effect 18, '19. We voted on this in the fall, and there is another much larger area that has moved from Whittier into Loyal Heights that's also above 85th. So both that area and this area that we are talking about now are assigned to Ingram. So if we do move the area north of 85th and to the west of 28th Avenue Northwest into Ballard, there would still be a portion of the Loyal Heights boundary assigned to Ingram, and that portion is actually much larger in number.
Thank you.
Director Pinkham?
So what you were just saying, then, this additional group of students that are north of 85th, that was just recently added because Loyal Heights expanded?
Yes.
But then the other one that we're talking about, that's west of 28th, that was part of the original Loyal Heights boundaries.
Yes, that was part of the original Loyal Heights boundary, and that was also, as was mentioned, had previously been part of the Ballard attendance area years ago, so that's kind of the connection.
Mr. General Counsel, are you ready with specific amendment language, sir, so we can-
I think we're very close.
Move on it.
Let me just check it with Ashley real quick to make sure-
Thank you.
We're captured.
Fourteen projected, forty-four-
Yes.
Okay.
But are using other options. Thanks for your patience, folks. Director Burke, did you have additional comments, questions, concerns about the concept here?
I think this is one of these places that I get uncomfortable, both did we miss something and are we doing something that has unintended consequences?
and are we doing something that has unintended consequences? As Ashley mentioned, there are two regions that are part of Loyal Heights but are not part of Ballard. This is the smaller of the two. And the number of students in it, once you reduce it down by ones that are choosing other options, is a rather small number. So the impact to Ballard High School would be insignificant. But if we draw that, are there other students in there that are already looking another direction? You know, we got a, the petition document that was reported from many Loyal Heights families. But this is one of those short timeframe sort of things where we have some of those families that responded to the petition might be in the other Loyal Heights region. And so if we move one of them and not the other, it could have the perception of not delivering on the commitment or being preferential. So I'm just really cognizant that we... This is something that I would like to do, but I don't understand if there's unintended consequences of doing just part of it. And then I'm also really sensitive about creating an alignment between an elementary school boundary and a high school boundary because all of these kids attend Whitman Middle School. So there's a K-5 progression for the community. But then there's another community that is built in middle school, we hope, aspirationally, that is part of the group going to Ingram. So there's just, there's a lot of different directions of intersection here. And I'm just really sort of nervous doing this as a amendment at this time. I'd like to, I don't know if I could put staff on the spot to understand any of the unintended consequences. Now that we thanked you for everything to kind of put you on the spot.
Status quo normal again.
So I think, and again, you can look at this from a variety of different ways. We heard testimony today talking about the importance for these families in being able to stay together. And part of that was, again, as we mentioned, from the reflection of the Loyal Heights boundary has been what it is. It is now changing. A new community will be formed as the boundary has changed in their new building. You know, I think the biggest thing I'm thinking about is that with some of that conversation, it was really about maintaining that elementary community together all the way through. And again, with this additional portion of the Loyal Heights boundary that will begin next year, we would be still splitting that elementary cohort if we were to then have some, move that area into Ballard and not move the other area into Ballard as well.
Director Mack?
Ms. Davies, as well, when Lincoln opens, there may be more choice seats available at Ballard. And I'm curious about that because one of the things that still exists in our system is you can pick another attendance area during open choice. And if there's space available, then the tiebreakers apply. So it's no longer distance that used to be, but no longer distance, so bummer for that. But if you have a sibling, so the tiebreakers are sibling and then...
On the high school level, it would just be sibling and then lottery?
Sibling and then lottery. So these students above 85th have, or for the area C that we've been hearing from, C top, there's, we were hearing mixed comments from some folks that said yes to Ingram and some that said yes to Lincoln. So my question is around when Lincoln, when Lincoln opens, and presumably Ballard will have a little bit more space, that there could be some choice seats set aside. Do you have a sense of what that might look like? Like how many seats? Or do we just not know until we get there?
I think it's going to be difficult to know until we get there. The one thing I will say at the high school level, one, because we have less high schools overall and because the geographies are bigger. And so what we tend to see, and this plays into the choice element, is that two high schools close to each other, you have students from both wanting to go to maybe the other one. And so those are ways that through the choice process, we call them swaps, in the sense that where we can kind of balance things out and it not affect the capacity. We see more of that when high schools neighbor each other. And again, because there are less high schools, we are able to do that more than we have 70-plus types of elementaries. It's just more challenging to be able to maximize choice in that respect.
I have to bite. The word swaps. Are we going to be using swaps in the waitlist between schools?
So we can do them in the sense that they follow the guidelines outlined in our student assignment plan. So when we can, we most definitely will. But what we can't do is go across people out of the order in which they're given those priorities.
Okay, I want to be crystal clear about this because I don't want to, I don't want to go back to where we were a year ago. Superintendent Nyland?
I think I'll give you, you know, we're working on it. So we talked about this at cabinet today and realized that we have a lot of definitions floating around. So Joe Lynn and team, and it's a challenge because it comes out of fiscal, it comes out of facilities, it comes out of enrollment, it comes out of CNI, teaching and learning. So we will, in the next week, get you that information. But basically, and I don't know how it works at the high school level, at the elementary level, it's within seats available on both ends. So if there's a room in a school that we can grant a request to, we do that if it won't take a teacher from the sending school. And the reason why we do that is, I think it was $7 million last year, if we were just to open all of the gates and let everybody go where they wanted to go, and then we would be either backfilling lots of teachers or we would be pulling teachers from one building and moving them to another building and disrupting learning. So we understand that it was confusing last year, and we understand that our terminology sometimes causes us to trip over ourselves. So we will write it down and we will check it three times and we will get it to you in writing and hopefully be able to explain it again the same way the second time.
Thank you very much for that. Director DeWolff?
I know you've been incredibly thoughtful about time tonight, so...
You were the gentleman that wanted out of here at 8:15, sir.
I know. My husband's going to kill me. But I wanted to say I'm happy to kind of clean up my language if you want to, if, you know, if folks feel comfortable.
Okay. We need a formal motion with formal language in order to vote on it. I think we have discussed ad nauseam the concept. And I appreciate, A, that you brought it forth, and B, you were right to do so. Please don't take any disrespect from this because we have room for this kind of collaboration on this dais.
Certainly. I feel that.
So would you like to read the motion formally?
Yes.
And get your second?
Thank you, Noel, for your assistance, and thank you, Ashley, too. I appreciate the, I think they say Hail Mary Pass or whatever the phrase is in sports. I move to amend scenario FV 4.3 to include the Loyal Heights Elementary area north of 85th and west of 28th Avenue Northwest boundary in the, excuse me, in the Ballard High School boundary.
Do we have a formal second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or concerns, or do we go to the roll call? Director Mack, and then let's move to the vote, please.
I'm hesitant...
Director Mack and then Director Burke, but if we could keep it short, would be most appreciated.
I just want to make the quick comment that I'm nervous about the unintended consequences of this and splitting the community and only doing a section of Loyal Heights that they're asking for. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that this was actually the old boundary back in 2009, and something happened where they just dropped it at 85th. And that geographically, that area is actually kind of remote and funny, and getting in and out of there is not as easy as you would think on the map. So I'm inclined to say yes, even because of the geography aspects and the historical boundary that I think just kind of got lost in the last boundary process.
Thank you. Director Burke, and then we go to a vote, please. Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Patu? Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Upstate.
This amendment has passed with a vote of five to zero to two.
Okay. Number three, approval of capacity management actions for the 2018-19? Excuse me, we have to go back to the motion as amended and retake a roll call vote.
I know, we do all the work.
Ms. Scheck, roll call, vote, please. Thank you.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended with amendments two, four, five, and six has passed unanimously. And one?
One, two, four, and five, and six. Six being Director DeWolff's. Thank you, everyone that hung in here to make good things happen. Hugely appreciated. Number three, approval of capacity management actions for 2018-19 school year. This went to Ops on January 4. Director Mack?
It did, for consideration. In the meantime, we've gotten additional details from staff about the where and the who.
Okay.
And the projections.
May we have the formal motion, please? Mr. Vice President?
Deep breath. I move that the board authorize allocation of up to $4,510,000 from a combination of the BTA III, BTA IV, and BECS IV capital funds to implement annual capacity management actions in spring semester 2017-18 and summer 2018 to support projected district homeroom and program capacity needs for the 2018-19 school year, and authorize the superintendent to take the necessary steps to implement the actions as detailed in the attached capacity management recommendations.
Formal second, please.
Second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Mack?
Thank you so much for updating the information here with additional details and for all of your really hard work bringing on buildings because you do an amazing job. And I had a specific question because the schools that are listed here are Lawton, Madison, Mercer, Ballard, Garfield, Roosevelt.
Yep.
And it was a meeting at Thurgood Marshall yesterday and learned from them that they expect to get another two portables, and that's not on this list. So I'm wondering, is there another list or...
We are implementing some planning, Director Mack, at this time at Thurgood Marshall. We're also looking at Co-Elementary School. We will need to wait till we close open enrollment to finalize our portable planning and where we are going to need to add portables. At this time, we have added those three portables as part of the TBD in the contracts that you approved for portables last, last board meeting. So the Thurgood Marshall portables are really, we're looking at locating the highly capable cohort program at Thurgood Marshall. I'm going to have Director Davies further explain that, so.
Thank you, Ashley.
Hi, Ashley Davies, Director of Enrollment Planning. So there's a question about Thurgood Marshall and the enrollment there and some of the plans. So one of the things that we were talking about in terms of capacity planning and the additional portable was currently in West Seattle, Fairmont Park is our option HC site. It has quickly reached capacity. And for families who live in West Seattle, their designated pathway school is Thurgood Marshall. So we had a conversation with the staff at those schools as well as currently taking a look at our advanced learning eligibility numbers and enrollment projections for Fairmont Park and Thurgood Marshall. And as a contingency plan, in the event that we have too many students, both within the attendance area that we need to accommodate because that's their guaranteed seat, and then depending on the eligibilities that we get and those who decide to opt into the pathway, we may need to have some families from West Seattle who are newly eligible in HC have seats at Thurgood Marshall rather than Fairmont Park. So that is part of the planning for the additional portable in the event that we need it.
Director Mack?
So just to clarify, the challenge is that Fairmont Park is going to be overcapacity and not able to accept students that live in their neighborhood.
Correct.
And so those students are going to be sent further away.
So the students, the, so the students who live, so Fairmont Park is an attendance area school.
Right.
And so the students who live in the attendance area, we have to accommodate them within the school. It's for those who are opting into HC who do not live in the attendance area.
Correct. But it's the optional pathway for West Seattle.
Yes, right.
Yes. So we have a capacity challenge in West Seattle that we're overloaded. Just, I think that's the point I'm trying to make here is that West Seattle is overloaded from capacity standpoint, and Thurgood Marshall is as well. The community was telling me there yesterday that there's substantial development going on within the boundary area of Thurgood Marshall. So I would like to, if I could, ask, one, for, and I don't know if I need an amendment or anything to this, but I would like to have a report at some point back to operations, like how this all shakes out for, like a finalized, this is actually what we're going to be doing because this is a tentative right now, capacity management plan. And the second piece is that we continue to have these capacity challenges all across the district, and it's, it's because we're overloaded and we've got, we don't have enough buildings. So I just want to put a pin in that we need to set up a process that's more transparent, I think, for schools to raise the issue of, oh my gosh, we know we're going to be overloaded because these developments are going on, et cetera, that we actually have some sort of process that that can get into the queue so that we can get those planning, that planning going. And in this case, the planning has already started, but it, I think it would be helpful for us to have a picture of what the queue is, of how many places we're actually having to try to mitigate this. Because we're spending $4 million this year because of our overcrowding.
Yeah. And our team, as well as Richard's team, have been finding ways to discuss in more depth some of these developments and ways that we're working to make sure how we're accommodating them. So I would love the opportunity to continue to figure out a...
So I would love the opportunity to continue to figure out a great, really transparent forum that we can share that information, not only with the Operations Committee, but I think there's also things that we can just share that would be interesting and helpful to the community to talk about that, so.
And point of personal privilege, I believe that kind of transparency would go a long way towards addressing levy fatigue, levy confusion, and our huge smart goal of community Mr. Best?
So...
With a note at the time of 9:00 PM. Director Burke?
Request, don't have to respond to this. As part of this work, I just wanted to officially put an ask in that you could evaluate the wall project at Roosevelt that we've discussed a little bit, if that's an area where the CTE program there could gain some additional capacity through this work.
Could you give us a paragraph on that? Because some of us are completely dense as to what you're talking about.
There is a small shop space that's next to a room that was allocated as a paint area. The room that's allocated as a kind of a paint chemical area is essentially unutilized or unutilizable, but if the wall between them could come down, then the space would be a lot more functional. And so the question is, does that provide capacity to put more students in it? Because that's such a great program there, and I know it's a high-demand program, so I just wanted to put that on the radar for this work if it's appropriate.
Okay. Let's talk about propriety, Mr. General Counsel. We're making ass here in the same conversation as a resolution. Please give me direction.
Well, at this point, it doesn't sound like we need any formal amendments to the motion as proposed. And generally, you want to keep the conversation germane to the motion on the table.
Thank you.
So, you know, if there are comments or requests that are germane to this or tangential to this, we could have those now, but otherwise, you might suggest taking those offline or bringing them up at Ops Committee directly to get the information that Directors desire. That way, you can move on with voting on this proposed motion.
So noted. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Or Ms. Scheck, can we move to a roll call vote, please?
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Best.
This motion has passed unanimously.
I want it known that I asked about propriety. Number four, adopting resolution number 2017-18-14 to declare that lives of Black lives, Black students matter, as well as the lives of all of our students of color, and that we encourage participation district-wide in the National Black Lives Matter at School Week, at school, week, from February 5 through 9, 2018. Have a formal motion, please.
Director DeWolff, would you like to do this, or would you like?
First paragraph concerned.
I'd be grateful. Thank you. I move that the board approve resolution number 2107/18-14, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Seattle School District Number One, King County, Seattle, Washington, to declare that the lives of Black students matter, as well as the lives of all of our students of color, and that we encourage participation district-wide in the Black Lives Matter at School Week from February 5 through 9, 2018, as attached to this board action report. Immediate adoption is in best interest of the district. Period.
Comments, questions, or concerns?
I, sorry, just gonna jump in, because I'm really excited. I really do want to elevate, and I know they're not here, because it's definitely, there's probably a really fun MTV show on, but this was why it is particularly important for me, not only because I think we have a really important role as a district in our city to make this declaration, and one of the things that came up from the NAACP Youth Coalition's, the folks within that group, is that they saw a strong need to be included in decision-making and being able to help shape how we're doing things in the district. And so for me, this was the first step in affirming that I value our youth of colors' perspective and insights and experiences, and that this is just step one in a process of making sure that we are elevating their voice, and I will figure out what that looks like, whether it's monthly meetings with them to encourage dialogue around what we can do, but I think that we have an ability, an opportunity to have a really critical relationship with them in helping us to make sure that we're held accountable, and also doing things in the best interest of our students of color and historically marginalized populations. So I'm just so grateful to all seven, well, six of you, for signing on to this, because I think it is a real important statement to make, not only to our students of color, but to every student in our district, that we value all parts of you. And when you come into our schools, our hope is, and our pursuit is, that you can come to your school as your whole self, and this is one step in that direction.
Thank you. I would suggest that when you build out your plan for continued engagement, that you hold hands with your fellow colleagues, because I think that they will help you to the very best of their abilities. Director Pinkham?
Thank you. Director DeWolff, I appreciate you putting this forward and bringing it so we can affirm, you know, that we support all our students, and a picture of those that are marginalized and have gone through a lot as far as, unfortunately, because of the color of their skin, that either some prejudice or discrimination happened, happens to them, and they necessarily will, I can't change the color of my skin, so people make some judgments. And I like to, yes, Black lives do matter, all lives matter, and I made reference to this earlier. If people want to look it up, it's an interview with Nicole Hannah Jones. The title of the article is "Our Private Schools and Moral: A Conversation with Nicole Hannah Jones About Race, Education, and Hypocrisy." It's with The Atlantic, so people just want to Google that, look it up, and read it. I just want to welcome them to do that. And again, Director DeWolff, thank you.
And before you shut down, can you just go ahead and send that out to schoolboard@seattleschools.org? Thank you, sir. Comments? Director Geary?
Thank you, Director DeWolff, for bringing this. Super important, and I think we've said a lot on this, and I think my thoughts are clear. I just want to add that the conversation around expectation and having those students not let anybody lower our district's expectation of them starts from day one and goes all the way through their entire career here, and that if they want anyone to stand with them in terms of fighting for that expectation and the kinds of education they should have readily available to them, they can always call my number. So, thank you, and we need to change that perspective, because I think so much of what we are facing now is a history of far too low expectation, and we see that perpetuated everywhere.
Director Patu, and then Director Burke, is that correct?
Also wanted to say thank you to Director DeWolff for actually bringing this up, and it's long overdue, and definitely is something that should have been done a while back, but, you know, I thank you for bringing it forth and making us realize that, you know, all kids need to be treated the same and deserves an excellent education.
Director Burke?
I want to thank our colleague, Director DeWolff, for, you, you really hit it out of the park in a lot of ways, engaging with the student community, authentically engaging with the student community to help us build a policy document, and engaging with all of us to really make it, so that reflected the values of the board. And so I just want to thank you again for that, because it's, I think it was really a model process, and it was super fast and nimble. So thank you.
Let me add my props and my pride in your work product. Way to go. And again, to our teachers, to our communities that doubled down and made this something a whole lot more than a stunt, that is going to be embedded and that we build upon. Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Absolutely aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
And what a great way to end our meeting. Thank you all so very, very much. This is a team sport. Actually adjourned at 9:10.